Welcome to the Eureka County Commissioners Debate 2024. We've got Marty Plaskett and Tracy Mallard. I'd like to thank Blanco Productions for putting this on. Tyler Blanco is up filming this event and is also administering with the livestream. This whole thing couldn't have happened without him, so I'd like to thank Tyler again for doing all this and helping us out and recording it, so that way everybody in the community can see it. Couple of things I'd like to go over, how the format of this debates, that way the audience is informed of how it's going to operate. We're going to have a coin toss between Marty's going to flip, we had a pre-decision, and Marty's going to flip, and Tracy's going to call it. Then we'll begin with opening statements, coin toss winner will go first with a two-and-a-half-minute opening statement, and then two and a half minutes for the second. First, the winner will get the first question, and then the second question will begin with the loser of the coin toss, and it will continue in that pattern, and then we'll have a two-minute response, and then a one-minute rebuttal following for each commissioner, or potential commissioner. All right, and at the end we'll have three-minute final wrap-up, and if we have extra time, we may have time for questions from the community, depending how fast we get through it. So that said, we can begin with a coin toss. All right, all ready with the courting? All right, call it. All right, perfect, we'll begin with Tracy, you have two and a half minutes.
Hello, fellow Eureka'ns, I'm Tracy Mallard. For those of you that know me, you know that I can be long-winded, I can even talk to a fence pole for hours, so I thank you for being patient with me, because I would like for each of you to get to know me just a little. I am a child of God, a wife, mother of six, nona to 11 grandchildren, with one on the way. I am a 20-year-retired debt collector, who actually helped people rather than yell and scream at them. I managed as little as four to 300 people during my career, creating teams, goals, programs that would advance employees, not just set them up for failure. I was the boss who would actively listen, who had a backbone to make hard decisions, and wasn't scared if someone was not going to like me. I created solutions with the input from everyone, even if it was an opinion I didn't agree with. I managed budgets and portfolios as high as $2 billion, and as low as only having $12,000 a year. I am an advocate for veterans, those who suffer with mental health illness, and those who deal with food insecurity. For the past 15 years, I have been a professional volunteer. A commitment I made to myself when coming out of a battered women's transitional home after a five-month recovery from injuries from my first husband. I know what it's like to overcome. That promise was that I would then pay it forward one day, because so many wonderful people helped me during a time of need. One example of many was when I volunteered and came aboard number-
10 seconds.
-at a soup kitchen that was not receiving $1 in donations each month.
Okay, can we begin with Marty's opening statement, please? Thank you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rain and his whole team for making this happen, Eureka County for letting us use this opera house. Ms. Story always does a wonderful job keeping everyone with refreshments and does all the work behind the scenes to make this happen. I'm Marty Plaskett, lived here all of my 59 years, every one of them so far, and I really thought my political aspirations were over after being student president in Eureka County High School, but somewhere along the line, after running businesses and raising children here, you have a feeling and a desire to give back, and that's really why I applied to be appointed. I cannot claim the incumbent position, because I was appointed to fill a vacated spot, so this is my first turn in an actual election. And my goals really is just to protect and preserve the way of life we have here and what we have, and manage it well. I really have no, didn't come in with any big changes in mind. I'm learning to stay in my lane a little more than when I first started. I've been through two budget cycles. Like I said, I've been here in 17 months in the appointed position, and just kind of barely getting my feet underneath me. There's a lot of moving parts that I didn't realize until I stepped into this, and it's natural to want to micromanage, and you need to stay in your lane, let the system work. We have wonderful people that run this county every day, and we're there for oversight and to help with how the money is spent, but we're not trying to make huge changes. I've been involved in numerous boards, the ones that are important to the county are Chair of the Juvenile Probation Committee through the commission, I was natural for all the water decisions, of course, INRAC, search and rescue, I'm a volunteer fireman in Diamond Valley.
10 seconds.
Thanks.
All right, as long as it's fair. All right, first question for Tracy, we'll answer first, and then Marty will get his two minutes' response. As a county commissioner, what is the most important issue affecting Eureka County today?
As a county commissioner, what I feel like my job would be is the important issue at my job and staying in lane is being capable of obtaining as much money for the county as possible without it being an increase in a burden to the residents that are here. And different avenues, different pies, different, can we get money from grants, can we get money from this avenue, can we get as much money as possible, and then find a way where, through law and ordinances, where that much is given back to the state, and then there is a fair distribution of funds throughout the county wherever the need is. That's what I think would be an important issue where I can stay in my lane as a county commissioner.
Go ahead, Marty, do you want to reread?
My feeling is it'll be the issue that I don't expect, because everything runs fairly smoothly, and we handle most things very well, we're prepared well, I should say, but it's the things, the unknowns that we don't know, the floods, the, you know, the things that you can't, you can't plan for is going to be the thing, but we're well-prepared, so I feel we can handle everything, but it takes everyone, it's not an individual task.
Do you have anything to add against Aaron to that?
No.
All right, yield your rebuttal minute, anything else? Okay, we'll proceed with the next question, this one will be for Marty first. The last fiscal year, the county spent $48.5 million. How would you, as a county commissioner, combat overspending, or would you increase revenue?
Yes. I have obviously been involved and a part of that problem of spending what we have spent, but the reason is to maintain our infrastructure. We've got a ton of public works projects, streets, sewer, all the foundation stuff has not been addressed for too long. In the meantime, everything has doubled, the price of everything, which we all know. So with that double whammy, we're taking it a bite at a time of what we can feel we can handle, but I'm not in favor of raising a bunch of revenue to cover more costs. We're just going to take it as we can budget.
All right, go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, so also been a part of the budget season each year, sitting on the other side of the bench, and I think there are several areas that we could probably be a lot more conservative with. That is not going to be something that I can just flamboyantly say, oh, we're going to cut here, and we're going to cut there. This is something where I need to be involved on a commissioner level, so I can see the ins and outs, and what we have already committed to, and areas where, for whatever reason, if there is not an immediate need, that we can reduce the cost that we're dealing with. Like Marty said, we're dealing with double with everything, and I think they did a pretty good job this year, frankly. There is some waste that's going on, and it would, as far as I'm concerned, be something that is an input from the people. I don't think this is, okay, Tracy Mallard, this is what Tracy Mallard wants to do, this is what Marty wants to do, this is what Rich wants to do. This is what does the people of Eureka County want, and we are the people who are there to advocate on your behalf, in my opinion, of what it is that you want us to do. So it's teamwork. I would need for some people to say to me, we want to cut in this area, and in this area, and if we can do that as a team-
10 seconds.
-we could probably be more conservative.
All right, Marty, you have one minute to respond to that.
Okay. Yeah, it's just about prioritizing where the money should be best spent. It's hard to pick and choose or to target one area, because we're always looking to be fiscally conservative and still meet our goals, so it's just, it's an effort that I see happening all the time, so it's not overlooked by any means.
You have one minute to respond to that.
Don't beat me.
Would you like to continue, sorry, you got another minute, anything?
Not, you just took the thought process right out of the head, so.
All right, excellent, so we'll move on to question number three, let's speak to you first, Tracy, then, quick question. According to many, there is a grave problem in regard to Diamond Valley water. As a county commissioner, what will you do to resolve this issue?
Let's say that this is a whole lot easier said than done, and a lot more complexed. There is a lot that I would have to learn. I do understand that we are facing some people who are going to come down here and tell us what we can and cannot do with the water. I know that we have started a basic water conservation program in Diamond Valley, where the water is being measured. I have not seen any of that information. I would hope that these are positive steps to help with this crisis. I don't know, I'd be pretty angry if I had somebody who wasn't able to do their job very well and over-appropriated money, and now you're telling me that I may lose my business. So, again, I would need input. I do not live in Diamond Valley, and this is one of the things that I'm running on, is more representation throughout the county. This is a question that I would definitely go straight to Marty. Marty has been here, he understands it, and I would value his input and anybody who lives in this area, their input, and focus on advocating what it is that they are wanting, and how they are wanting to handle this, and then advocate in that fashion.
All right, go ahead, Marty, two minutes.
I sit on the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority, which is this area here, and then since I've been a commissioner, also on the Humboldt River, which covers the north end of the valley, so it started way, way before I ever was a commissioner, but it was a proactive approach to come together, the farmers to come together here, to make a plan that was designed from the bottom up, and we sent it to the state engineer, and he approved it, so the groundwater management plan is exactly a conservation and pumping reduction plan to help balance the basin, and that's good for every user in the basin, and it's working well.
Any response to that, Tracy, one minute?
No.
Anything further you'd like to add, Marty, one minute? Okay, we'll move on. So, Marty, first question for you, you get the first response, two minutes. Explain Eureka County healthcare expenditures and any changes that you will make to this during your term.
We have a healthcare committee, and the reason for that committee is to be in close contact with all the employees, with our insurance, with William B. Ryrie, with our local clinic, and also the clinic in Crescent Valley, so I don't know specifics, other than they are working diligently to make sure we get the best bang for our buck, because we're rural, we have different needs in North and South. The North End is much closer to more services than we are, actually, but it's just, the committee will help balance the needs of the citizens, and there's also a medical advisory committee in Crescent Valley, also recently formed.
Go ahead, two minutes.
Steel, can you repeat the question, please, so I can-
Of course.
...understand absolutely.
Explain Eureka County healthcare expenditures and any changes you will make to this during your term.
Okay, we have, we have some issues to face with the healthcare that we have going on in Eureka County right now. Currently, we have a $630,000 budget, and $430,000 goes to the Eureka Clinic, and $180,000 goes to the Crescent Valley Clinic. Eureka County has, or Eureka, rather, has a very robust, supported clinic, whereas in Crescent Valley, that is not the case. That transition, when we transitioned from one provider to the next, that is when the clinic in Crescent Valley just totally dissipated, and now we are in the works of trying to increase the numbers. In order to do that, I think that we need to have equal distribution of funds. That doesn't necessarily mean to increase the budget that we currently have of $630,000, where can we find some more money? One way that we can do that is in Eureka, the Eureka Clinic is actually considered a rural clinic. The one that is in Crescent Valley is not. So if we could make the Crescent Valley Clinic a rural clinic, this would open us up to being able to apply for grants that would be able to help with the extra funds that are needed in order to staff the Crescent Valley Clinic. We have our going-
10 seconds.
We, okay.
Okay, all right, you have a one minute, or one minute response to that?
Yes, I would rely on the newly-formed committee in Crescent Valley to designate their needs and let us know where the holes are, so we can address it with our current provider, or if need be, we would change gears and whatever we need to do to meet the need. I do rely on the committees to come up with that, because I don't have enough information to make the best decision.
All right, go ahead and continue, one minute.
So currently, we have a nurse practitioner that is in the Crescent Valley Clinic, and we go on a year-to-year contract with William B. Ryrie. This provider is currently asking for $391,000 in order to continue in this clinic. So, again, this would be about where can we find money in different areas, so it is not an additional cost to the taxpayer, and so where we can continue to try to provide a Level III clinic in both areas.
Very good. All right, so this first, this question will be to you first, Tracy, and then he can respond. Explain past and current expenditures on Eureka equipment, and what will you do to change this during your term? Equipment, this is a equipment purchases question.
Okay, what kind of equipment? We own a lot of stuff.
That was the question, how about heavy equipment, machinery, machinery like vehicles, bulldozers, front-end loaders, the like?
It would be based and dependent on the need, so if we have a department head that comes to us and is requesting certain equipment in order to accomplish a job, in order to better the lifestyle of the people of Eureka County, then it would, I mean, this is part of budget. I don't believe at this time that there is any particular change that's needed. The only change that there would ever be is if we had a department head come and say that they are in need of a particular piece of equipment, and it would be a yes-or-no vote based on where we are in our budget that year. There wouldn't be any particular change from me.
All right, go ahead, Marty, two minutes, would you like me to reread it, anything?
Well said.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't need to add anything to that.
Oh, nothing?
I'm serious.
Nothing, oh, no response, anybody? All right.
It's a strange question.
Okay. All right, first, Marty, explain past and present Eureka County Sheriff's Office expenditures and any changes you will make to this during your term.
We, during the budget cycle, like to see departments that stay within the bounds of their projected budget, so that department in particular is usually over, so it'll get a little more scrutiny than one that's not over, when we look at the whole big picture. There may be total justification for that, but that's why we ask the questions of, why are we over-budget there? Is there a need that wasn't foreseen? Are we top-heavy somewhere? Are we bottom-light somewhere? But it's just all part of the evaluation of why, it doesn't matter what the department heads, what the department label is, doesn't matter, any department that's over is going to get a little more scrutiny on why the budget is over, the forecast budget.
Two minutes to respond, Tracy.
Will you read the question again, please?
Of course, of course. Explain past and present Eureka County Sheriff's Office expenditures and any changes that you will make to this during your term.
Okay, $5.4 million for 2,000 people. Here's the hard part, 44, you know, 100 square miles, it makes it difficult. I can see how we need a bigger budget. On our end, what I'm hearing is that they want 24-hour protection, this costs money. There are some things, we got some travel going on, that is a lot. I see both sides, I do understand that the sheriff is a politician, and he's networking and seeing any resources that he may not have, where he can get and bring if he is in a particular situation. He's young, so there's a lot of training, so I can see the concern on both sides. I would need to look at the numbers more closely, but $5.4 million, we just went from $3.9. It's an extensive budget for 2,000 people, in my opinion. Again, I would be glad to be presented with the whole budget, I haven't looked at that, and see where the money's being spent, and go from there.
All right, you have one minute to respond.
Did I mention I've been here my whole life? I've seen a change from, when there, I swear there was only three people down there, to 17 or 18 or whatever it is now, so it's all based on if the public feels that need is there, and they want that level of protection and security, then we'll find a way to fund it, but what we're starting to, the indication is that maybe it's a little stronger than needed, but you hate to have something happen, you know, as soon as you want to cut back, but we are looking a little closer at that to get it more in line with what rural Nevada is all about, and the number of deputies per capita in the county.
Tracy, you have one minute to respond to that?
Sounds good.
Anything? Very good. Too easy, all right.
He's telling you the right thing, and we're actually in line in a lot of areas, so I'm not going to sit here and pounce on somebody who, you know, there's things to learn on both ends, what he's saying has some truth to it.
So you'll answer this next question first, we'll begin with you, Tracy, that is. Explain past and present Eureka County personnel numbers and positions, and any changes that you would like to make to this during your term.
I would like to see about adding a grant writer. I understand the holdup on that right now is because we don't know where to put the grant writer under. The grant writer is a person that is essential to a municipality. I really truly believe that we are missing out on hundreds of millions of dollars that is offered by the federal government, that can help us with our infrastructure, that can help us with our water, can help us with the expansion that what I am hearing everybody wants. So I would like to see a grant writer. I would like to see some other positions that are put into play. Of course, that would be dependent upon where we are as far as the budget is concerned. So, again, I'd like to be able to be faced- So, again, I'd like to, uh, be able to be faced and dive into those numbers to be the decision-maker and, and see what it is and see what kind of input it is from the public that the public is wanting. But right now, the, the primary position is that, um, I truly believe we need a grant writer. This is how we're going to pull more money into, uh, Eureka County. Now, currently, we have the department heads who are the grant writers. I think our department heads have enough to do, and if you actually look at their job descriptions, it's extensive. One particular job, uh, description that I just recently reviewed, I'm not kidding, is, the job description is two of these pages-
Ten seconds.
-long. Um, let's not set our employees up for failure, please. Let's put in the necessary people. We need jobs.
Okay, let's have Marty's response.
Sure.
I think the, the current commission is, is, um, fairly conservative and cautious about adding, uh, headcount because it obviously is not cheap. With the benefits and everything that we offer, times their, their hourly wage, times 1.6, to get what it costs the county. So, we really try to use, utilize casual workers where we can, and we're, we've got a broad enough job description in a lot of those jobs that people can cover other areas, um, especially if, when they've got slack time. It's in the winter, for instance, where summer's really busy. You can, you can float those and use those people where they're, they're needed more. So they do, our, our department heads do an excellent job at, at managing, um, how many people they need to perform the duties.
I tend to disagree. Um, and the reason being is, um, in the area where I live, our town hall is open one day a week, um, for two hours. And there are people who are in need of doing business at town hall. We have one person, and she has about 15 hats. I think that, um, we can fulfill the need, um, at a cheaper cost than, than what we're actually imagining. So, um, I do disagree with that. We, we don't need to have 20 positions for one person and have to wait for a mechanic to come to Crescent Valley, uh, once a month, and we're opening a fire truck with a screwdriver. Let's give some people some jobs. And if we don't have the work-
Ten seconds.
-then we can promote, promote this as, um, some type of seasonal employment.
All right, let's have your response, Marty, one minute.
Uh, I'd like to say that we, we are aware of the problem in Crescent Valley with the, having the community center open more than one day a week. So we're looking at options there, and hopefully we'll come up with a solution. Couple days a week would be great.
All right, let's begin with the next question. All right, let's begin, uh, Mr. Plaskett, Mr. Plaskett first. Uh, will you add, amend, or remove any Eureka County code rules, regulate, or regulations during your term?
Not intentionally. But there, be, not having a building, any building codes is great in one respect, but we have to find a way to deal with issues that arise from that. So, so we're, we're constantly looking for avenues to address things that a building, a huge building department and codes and enforcement would handle. Um, because we all have neighbors. And, um, so, so I don't intend on changing anything, but we, we are looking at other, other ways we can improve, um, some of the conflicts that have come up because of not having a building, building codes and a building department.
Mrs. Mallard, two minutes?
Um, I currently understand that the current board is looking into creating zoning here in Eureka, um, and codes here in Eureka. That will be a definite no vote from me. I think, um, we are probably one of the last areas in America where we are allowed, um, that type of freedom. We have the government in our business about everything. We have to ask permission for everything. And we are in a place where we do not have that freedom being taken away from us. And I am not going to be a proponent to vote, uh, to take away that freedom.
I agree with a no vote for a building department.
Anything else to add to that, Tracy?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll proceed. All right, Mrs. Mallard, you'll, you'll, yes, you'll go first on this one. Explain any capital expenditures you plan to make during your term.
I have no plans to make any type of purchase whatsoever, capital or otherwise. Um, that is not, um, part of my agenda. Um, let's be honest, this is a self-interest world. So what is my self-interest? My self-interest is to be a servant to the people here in Eureka County, period. So if Eureka County wants to add some kind of capital, then Eureka County is going to have to come to me and say that's what they want. That is, um, my agenda.
Two minutes, Mr. Plaskett?
It's inevitable that, uh, we maintain our infrastructure, and it, it takes capital, and when we have just under 50 buildings, something like that, it's just constant upkeep, and there's always something that needs to be replaced. So it's just a natural part of the, part of the animal, and we're just, we're just there to help guide and justify and balance the expenditures for those capital improvements.
Not improvements, but creating additional capital is the way I understood it. So absolutely, we need to maintain, um, what we have here and the beauty that we have here. But as far as, um, adding multi-million dollar buildings, um, for whatever situation, I don't think that we're in a position right now to entertain that.
Anything else to add, Mr. Plaskett? You get one minute? Okay. Very good. All right, this next question is for you first. Earlier, earlier this year, Eureka County voted to increase property taxes. Do you agree with this increase? And do you plan to increase, maintain, or decrease property taxes in the future?
I was a strong proponent of it because I pay lots of property tax here, and that's what runs this county. But the reason that I was the strongest proponent for it probably is because it, it, it didn't affect only a very few people. Um, most of us are, are capped out, um, at our 3%. So we were mainly targeting, um, the mines in the north end because we would like them to pay a fair share, um, for their private property up there. So that was the justification for it. And it did generate a substantial amount of money. I don't anticipate that happening anytime soon, but you also have to keep up with the times. So if these costs continue to rise, we have to find a way, that's our biggest source of income, is our property tax. So it, I'm not going to say that it is, it won't be needed sometime in the future, but there's nothing planned immediately.
Two minutes, Mrs. Mallard?
This is a big difference, um, that we have. And the reason being is because I, I believe that there's more than one way to generate funds than property taxes. I will not be a proponent to raise property taxes, um, for a long period of time. I do understand, um, we, you have to understand, and, and understanding is that the main landlord in this county is the mines. And, um, so I, I do understand what the, it's going to generate a great deal of money. Um, it's going to, it's projected to generate one and a half million dollars, which we're looking at possibly can help with all of the things that we subsidize in the county for the Eureka's that live here. I think we would be able to have a whole lot more money that is generated if we were to include in our pie grants. And I have seen this, um, over and over and over for the past 35 years. This is a piece of the puzzle that we are truly missing out on. The current guy, the current guy up there, he has approved, um, where there was some ridiculous, multi-billion dollar infrastructure package. I can go on, um, grant.gov right now, and I can find $430,000 for the fire department. I can find, um, a million and a half dollars for the infrastructure, uh, to reline pipes. So I really truly believe this is an area that we are missing out on and would like to see funds generated from this avenue-
Ten seconds.
...taxing Eureka's.
One minute to respond.
I, I agree that there is probably some grant, um, opportunities that we could look at. Uh, often there are major strings attached to those. So we try to pick and choose the ones that make the most sense, um, to Eureka County. It's also, you have to consider lag time, and we, for the flood disaster in particular. I mean, we're one or two years before we, we have to pay the money, of course, and there's a couple of years on that grant to get it back. So there's always that, there's lots of things to consider, but, but I, I think our departments look pretty hard at it, and, um, I'm happy with the way it's going now.
One minute, Miss Mallard? Anything else?
Um, I'm not currently working with the department heads like Marty is. I can only take his word that, um, I do not disagree that they're not, um, doing a great job. But I think our department heads and the people underneath them have enough duties to do other than adding, um, it takes, um, sometimes up to a year to prepare for a federal grant. This is not something that you do in 30 minutes. This is, it takes time, it takes research, plans, there's all kinds of things that are involved with this. So, um, let's take that burden off of them and get someone who focuses on this so where it's another piece of the pie that we're bringing in in order to help us with all of our expenses here in the county.
All right, we'll begin with the next question. It'll begin with you, Miss Mallard. Uh, you'll get the first response, two minutes. Are there any additional taxes, fees, or service charges that you would like to increase, decrease, or remove during your term?
No.
Good. Marty?
And the reason why is I've just explained how we can increase revenues without having to increase a burden on, uh, people who live in Eureka County. Um, in the area that I live in, please understand that 17% live in poverty. 67% are over the age of 60. This is a great burden that we are putting on these people. So, no, I have no intention to raise anything and to make it a mission to find other avenues in order for revenue to come into the county.
Two minutes, Mr. Plaskett?
Well said.
All right. All right, back to, uh, Miss Mallard, anything? Nothing? All right, we'll begin with the next one. All right, uh, Mr. Pl- What will you do concerning the funding of the Boys and Girls Club?
Probably nothing, it's, uh, it'll come before the commission. If it, if it does come together, there's several, uh, several contributors. It's, it's a lot of moving parts. I'm all in favor for, for those kind of services, um, in this community, but it's, it's a, it's going to be quite a, quite a marriage to get that all together, but it would be wonderful, um, obviously, to share that expense with lots of people to, um, break, break it up and make it affordable.
Two minutes, Miss Mallard?
I'm excited to hear that we would have that to offer to families, um, no matter where it is. I think, um, if there is any kind of feasibility where it can be offered, um, anywhere there is a need, that would be a great thing. Again, you're talking about a nonprofit, and this pro, nonprofit would be, then be open up to grants. The grants, um, and, and how that works is you have several different grants, um, on a state and on a federal level, um, on a regional level. And, um, one grant you have, okay, well, we're going to put in this grant, and it's going to pay for our administration. Then you have another grant, and okay, now we've created a program, and the program is after school, and this is what we're going to offer the kids, and this is, um, how we're going to help people who are financially in a struggle, where we have a sliding scale. That program will then increase in the grant money. So this is, again, an area that I know very well, and, um, it, it, it doesn't have to be a substantial cost to the city or, um, to the county. We can be a contributing factor so that we are helping with governing this if they are going to expect, um, money from, um, from the county, similar to the Fair Board. However, um, nonprofit, you're, you're talking 100% grant-based that would be able to supplement everything that you need in order to run the program. I'm excited to hear something like that is being offered.
Ten seconds.
Perfect. Perfect.
All right, one minute, Mr. Plaskett?
I, I envision, uh, a project of that size, the county actually may end up being a minority, uh, partner there. If it is, uh, a UNR extension, um, a school district, uh, community benefit agreement with, uh, mines, um, it's, it's a big, it's a big deal because it's a huge project. So, all those moving parts, I, I just, um, off the top of my head, to expect maybe the county to be a minority, um, partner in that, in the creation of that.
Anything further you'd like to add, Miss Mallard?
Well said.
Perfect.
All right. This next question is for you. You'll get the first response, two minutes. Do you support the addition of two, of two or more county commissioners to increase the board to a five-chair board? Please explain why or why not.
Me first?
Yes, you get, yeah.
Okay, you guys know that I just put, did a presentation for a five-chair board. So yes, I'm absolutely in support of it. Why? We're, we're in a massive county, it's, it's huge. And where I live, so I'm not sure if everybody is aware of, um, the diagram of the districts in Eureka County. If you're not, I encourage you to go check it out. So where I live, um, which is off of Willow Corral Pass, um, and it goes all the way down to Diamond Valley. Okay, no problem, if you're okay with that. Where we live, we feel like we do not have, um, the representation, the voice at the table of the situations and the issues that we, and the challenges that we are facing in this area. So we're not facing, um, water right issues. I don't know, I don't live there. I have no idea what's going on there. Um, in the same, Marty doesn't live where we are, and- In the same, Marty doesn't live where we are, and let's be honest, he's kind of been down here, I think the last time he said, in his bubble of Diamond Valley, which is great. But I believe we need more representation throughout the county, and so do the majority of people where I am. We have specific issues. We are all unique. So, where I am, we are 100% off-grid homesteaders. You guys got electricity. How do you understand that if you're not living that?
Ten seconds.
Okay. This is a really big issue. More representation does not mean more government.
All right. Two minutes, Mr. Plaskett.
That's where we disagree. Another whole layer of, does that a lot, not only financially, but just bigger is not better, in my opinion there. I've never known anyone in the North End, Pine Valley, or wherever, not to call me on the phone if there's an issue, catch me wherever, at Rayleigh's, wherever. If there's an issue, you're going to hear about it, which is the way it should be. I mean, we're not out there looking for, oh, do you need this or do you need that? We're looking for major issues that affect a lot of people. So, I think if there was five, it would just fragment it, and there would be, there would be more unnecessary government, in my opinion.
One minute.
We definitely disagree. 125 people are currently being affected by Mormon crickets. Again, we are off-grid homesteaders. We have called, we have asked for help, we have spoken time and time and time again, and it is not an issue that, for the time that I have seen, has been any interest. If you are an off-grid homestead person, then your goals are to be self-sufficient, and you cannot do that if you can't grow food. You cannot grow food, and we have hundreds of millions of these crickets, hundreds of millions that are crawling all over our properties. So, we do need more representation, and I already have the petition in motion.
One minute to respond.
Nothing further to add, thanks.
Good. All right. This next question is for you, Mr. Plaskett. You get the first response, two minutes. How should money be allocated between the North and South parts of Eureka County?
It is apportioned based on essentially the property tax, is my understanding. And so, the county seat is obviously here, and there's a big task, a big tax base here. There's also a big tax base in the North with our mining partners and all the residents there, but it's always, it's been the way that it's been ever since I've been around, and it, I guess until it doesn't work that way anymore, then we would look at some change, but it seems to work the way it is.
Two minutes to respond.
This has kind of been the main means of contention that I have heard from the very beginning. North versus south. I believe that it is time for us to unite. This should no longer be a north and a south. We need to have a fair and equitable distribution of funds throughout the county where the need The only way that we're going to be able to do that is for us to do that. You have another, here's the same example, 183,000 for the clinic in the North, 430,000 for the clinic in the South. Now, if you lived in the North, how would that make you feel? And so, you would, this is where you are hearing that there is not as much money being distributed equally throughout the county. So, you can have that understanding. How we're going to unite that is with the equal distribution. That's really the bottom line. We're going to have to find more ways where we have income so where we can service all of the needs in all of the areas throughout the county. And understand that the majority of the people that I live with have no interest whatsoever in the North becoming the county seat. We don't want it there. That's not what we're interested in. We're interested in equal distribution.
One minute to respond. Mr. Plaskett?
From my understanding, it's, the way that it's split is based on a tax, on a tax base and revenue from that. So, it makes business sense to me that it's divided that way, and I don't plan to make any changes to it.
Anything further you'd like to add? One minute to respond. Ms. Millard?
If it is something that I have the majority of the people come to me and say that this is what they're wanting to do and the change that they're wanting to create, then that's where my vote would be. Again, that's where my agenda is, is in order to be a servant to the people, and if they are wanting something in a particular way, shape, or form, then having input. There has been several times where I have called, and the changes still aren't made. And it hasn't, it's not just a north and a south issue. There are several things that have happened here in the South that have been requested by the board, and for whatever reason, the decision is outside of what the people want. I want to do what the people are wanting to do.
Good. All right. This next question is for Ms. Millard first. You'll get two minutes to respond. According to the last census, 22% of Eureka County residents are employed by the government, while the state average is 11%. Would you change this, and if so, how and why?
And that's hard to believe. 22% of Eureka's are employed by the municipality here?
Government in total. Government in total being, including federal and state.
We are dealing with at least 82% who are employed by the mines. So, again, we need jobs. So, if we have 22% who are being employed federally, locally, or by the state, and that is what is feeding their family, I think these are good numbers personally. We're paying four and five dollars for gasoline. We're, it costs, I can't get three boxes of macaroni and cheese anymore. Okay? This is where we were at one point in time. Now, hopefully, fingers crossed, with the election this year, we're going to see all of the inflation go down, but we need jobs. So, the higher percentage, as far as I'm concerned, is not a negative. This is a positive. We need jobs in order to put food on the table for our families.
You have two minutes to respond. Mr. Plaskett?
On the local side, I think we're adequate. That was probably a 2020 census report, I'm guessing. Like on the federal level, I'm sure we would all like to see a little more activity in the state highway department. Obviously, have a poor and broken-down road going north. They have a hard time getting and maintaining employment at the state level because of their wage structure, I would imagine, but they're supposedly working on it. So, I see that number would probably increase, and I would be happy that we had more state highway people living here and paying taxes here and maintaining our roads better, highways better.
One minute to add anything or response, Ms. Millard?
No, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Plaskett? All right. In that case, you respond to this question. Mr. Plaskett? Do you believe the county uses the equipment we buy to its fullest capacity before disposing of it?
I do. I didn't make the auction today, but the people who did, we did realize some return and money that can be used to purchase new and more equipment. Business sense, we typically buy versus lease because we keep stuff a long time, and that makes the best business sense to do that.
Two minutes, Ms. Millard.
Full transparency, I have no idea. I do not know how long we are keeping vehicles, where they are in mileage, what their capacity is by the time we are putting them in that kind of inventory. So, I am not aware in order to give an opinion about that.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Nothing? All right, we'll proceed with the next one. Ms. Millard, you'll get the first response. Eureka County has faced many plagues of Mormon crickets in previous years. How do you believe the county can resolve this issue?
Again, easier said than done. One way I believe that we would be able to begin the control of this infestation, and that's what it is, it's a complete infestation on my property alone, hundreds of millions, and I'm not exaggerating. These are hundreds of millions every single day that are everywhere, eating everything. I think we need to attack the situation before they morph into adulthood. I mean, Jeff Knight's coming out and he's putting out bait, and these things have already morphed where they're reproducing. We need to take care of this situation prior to them being able to reproduce. That would be early spring. I've gotten to the point where I'm just, I'm killing them. You know, when you're off-grid homesteader, you don't want to mess with pesticides and all of this. You want to do things naturally. Yeah, I don't even care. I'm using pesticides and killing them when they hatch, and then there's still hundreds of millions. So, that would be my suggestion, is that we approach attacking this when they become hatchlings. The poison does kill them at that age.
Two minutes to respond. Mr. Plaskett?
This has been an ongoing problem for a long time. You know, we had our first probably bout with this in 2005 or something like that, but all the, all the research suggested, oh, they'll pass, this and that. Well, they haven't. They like it here, and they particularly like our fields, and they like Tracy's garden. I would strongly suggest to property owners that we extinguished enough of them with chemical to probably, to increase the organic matter in our fields by several percent. So, we turned a negative into a positive that way, and it was very, very reasonable on price, injected through the pivot. You do have to be a certified applicator. So, there's some hoops to jump through, but I would prepare now. It's great if the county can, and the state can do aerial applications in BLM and wherever they can do it, but it's going to take a combined total effort, private and government, to get ahead of this, ahead of this mess. But we did get a big jump on them, and the next spring is the time to do that again.
One minute to respond, Ms. Millard?
Well said. We need to kill them.
Okay. Fantastic. Anything else, Mr. Plaskett? All right, we'll move on. All right, you'll get the first on this one, Mr. Plaskett. What changes would you make to provide better health care to the people of Crescent Valley?
I would like to see Tracy on the medical advisory board or anybody they can get up there. We need to hear from those local people because they couldn't tell us how to run our end. So, we need to hear from that end, from that constituency, particularly to know how to address the issues and where to go, where to spend the money, what services are needed, and just the whole, the whole complete, complete basket of goods.
Two minutes, Ms. Millard?
The new creation of a medical advisory board is great, so I would look forward to whatever their recommendations are would be my first aspect. Thank you for the invitation, but no, thank you. I would rather not. And the reason being is because I believe what we're in need of doing is William B. Ryrie does not want to service that clinic. There needs to be some honesty and transparency about that. We were in a contract with them for them to come up at least twice a month. They refused to do it. So, we're having to rebuild a whole new clinic. With that being said, having a provider in there that wants $391,000 and thinks that a nurse practitioner, who typically averages nationwide $150,000 a year, is worth $264,000 a year, I think we need a new provider. I know that's not the popular answer, but that's what I think we need to do. I think we need to recruit. Recruit the young doctor to come and live in our communities rather than continuously contracting all of these services out. Let's, that would be the first step. I do believe that the county needs to, just like they have in the Eureka Clinic, supply, maintain, or upgrade any of the equipment to where it can be a Level III rural clinic. Let's fill out the paperwork and make it a rural clinic. These are all positive steps in order to make it so where the people
Ten seconds.
on the North End trust the health care and the provider that would be in that clinic.
All right. Mr. Plaskett, one minute to respond.
I agree.
All right. Anything further you'd like to add, Ms. Millard? One minute.
Did I say we need to recruit?
Okay. Done.